I'll go ahead and get started. And please accept our sincere apologies for being so late. A lot of business in executive session prior to this. So would everyone please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Well, welcome to the Monday, October 22nd, meeting of the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners. And again, we apologize for the delay. I will make notice that the board met in executive session just prior to this meeting, and we discussed matters of personnel and legal issues. Consent agenda. Do I have anything that anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda? No? Staff, is there anything you'd like to pull from the consent agenda? Does the public have anything they'd like to pull? All right. Then I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through E.
So moved.
I have a second. Okay. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes six to nothing with Commissioner Clark absent. All right. I'm going to, we're just going to be reversing a little bit, and I'm going to call for a public comment, or public participation at this time. And first, let me just say, so we have this new clock here. We're not going to be using it this evening, because I want everyone to see it. But we will be using this to help make sure that I am doing a better job of making sure that everyone has their five full minutes that they deserve, and I also don't have to interrupt anybody. So with that, good evening.
Good evening. Is this the right place? I'm Gail Morrison from Poplar Avenue in Wayne. I'm here tonight on behalf of a group called Radnor Residents for Gun Safety that I am a leader of, along with several other women here in town. We want to thank the Radnor Police Department, and Chief Flanagan, and Lieutenant Dietrich for the amazing support and dialogue we've had about gun safety and gun violence prevention programs. Just so everyone is aware, as of today, 23,000 Americans have been injured or killed with a gun in 2018 alone. And as I think everybody here knows, Radnor has been affected. There's been two murder-suicides this year, and I think we should remember the neighbors, the family members, the friends forever impacted by that, and of course, what happens outside of our town. So, so everybody knows the Radnor Police now have 500 free gun locks for any resident who asks, and the Radnor Police will take unused, old, broken, or no longer wanted guns and ammunition 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. Phone the police to make arrangements about that. Keeping guns locked and unloaded and inaccessible to curious young children, older adults in cognitive decline, anyone in a mental crisis who wants to harm themselves or others is the number-one thing all of us can do to prevent these tragedies. Next Tuesday, October 30th, at 6:45 PM, here in the Radner Room, the police are hosting the Active Shooter and Safe School Symposium. You'll see the two flyers about that. The Symposium also is part of the awareness program for the free gun locks that are available, as well as the gun turn-in that starts that night, can happen that night, but it happens anytime anybody needs that service from the police. So, that's the Symposium. We have flyers placed around town. Please spread the word. And we'll have, the speakers include our police officers, what they've learned in the training, what they've been told from Department of Homeland Security and other public safety organizations. We also have a community health, mental health expert from Children's Hospital of Philadelphia who will be here, or Chappas, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. The Be Smart Program to educate parents about safe gun storage and the responsibilities of gun ownership will also be a part of the event. I just want to thank the members of our group, the Wallace, Williams, Schwartz, McKenzie, Sutherby, Doffey, Hahn, Livinggood, Winters, Stitz Coleman, Sueback, Ream, Clan, Gilmore, and Borowski families for their contributions for the gun locks. My own family contributed as well.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Sarah Pulling, 29 Garrett Avenue. I wanted to let the township know of a wonderful opportunity, Sunday, November 4th, at Haverford College, over a five-hour period. It's a climate action expo sponsored by Haverford College, Penn Environment, and Delco Ready for 100. There will be PICO people to talk to, there'll be electric cars to check out, there'll be individual advice for homeowners, if that's what they want, as well as some commercial, talking about geothermal and solar. And I'd really like to encourage anyone to come. I also wanted to quickly let you know an update on our Ready for 100 program, which is in Delaware County. Robin Mann and I are leading the team here in Radnor Township. We now have 20 people who have committed to make this happen. We've spoken to several of the commissioners, we're in dialogue with Villanova University and Eastern, both of whom have an active program. We're reaching out to the garden clubs. We really think this is going to happen. So we're gathering the moss on the rock. So please consider coming to this, Sunday afternoon, November 4th, between the hours of noon and 5:00. And it doesn't mean, it means it runs from noon to 5:00, but you don't have to be there the whole time. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you for all your efforts. Who else? Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. My name is Marty Costello, and to my left is District Commander Ed Hatton, representing the American Legion and the people of Radnor Township tonight, concerning the hometown hero banners. I got a call from our manager, Mrs. Zankowski, a couple of months ago, to see if we could get this done. And I said we would. And hopefully, these banners will be on display through the township by Veterans Day. These are some of the men, the first one you see there is James Montgomery Whitman. He's the one who started this whole campaign several years ago. I was given access to the archives of Radnor High School on South Wayne Avenue. And I was talking to Jenny Whitman and Mr. McGuire, her husband, and he was a forgotten hero. So we just kept on doing this over and over again. And as you see, we have Luther H. Smith, Tuskegee Airmen. He lived in our township for many, many, many years, and he was one of the first African-Americans to fly military aircraft ever. The next one we have here is Captain Edward Gallagher. Now, what you're going to see here is just a sampling. Our township manager, Bob, has the rest of them sitting in front of him. This is World War I. And these gentlemen died in 1918. They're both graduates of Radnor High School. And Mr. Hatton's post, Bateman Gallagher, is named after the first two Radnor High School students to be killed in action by an armed enemy of the United States of America. The next one, and I think you recognize this one, Lisa, is one of the ones we honored just the other day when we rededicated the wall in the Radnor Township Memorial Library. It's called the Memorial Library for that reason. And 86 names are on that monument. As you go inside the library, it's to your left. I hope everybody can read those names, because 86 members of this small community being killed within a three-year period was quite a loss. We have a couple more here. We have Donald D. Burris, went missing in action, December 22nd, 1969. They never found him. Graduate, '65, 1965 graduate of Radnor High School, a real hero, and it was an honor to meet his sister and her father. And then we have Larry Marshall. Larry Marshall, 1966 graduate of Radnor High School. He died May 1st, 1968, in the jungles of Vietnam. Next one we have is Emmeline Tenell. Everybody knows Emmeline Tenell. His statue is out in front. He's a real, my neighbor when I was a little boy, and his banner's going to go up at Emmeline Tenell Park in Garrett Hill. And this is Leslie Cowan. Nobody in this township ever knew what Leslie Cowan looked like. We finally found a picture about a month ago. So the first-name park in Radnor Township was named after Leslie Cowan, Anthony Leslie Cowan, who was one of five Cowan boys to serve in World War II, and the one who didn't make it home. So I told you, this program spans 100 years. These two men are now serving in the United States Marine Corps, as you can tell. And one graduated in 2001, and the other one, 2016. And they're both serving today. So from 1918 to 2018, it's 100 years we've spanned with heroes here in Radnor Township. You're going to get the hardware first, Mrs. Zankowski, so you can put them up on the polls. We're going to identify them at first with GPS. In other words, wherever they are, closest address, that's where they're going to be. And then we're eventually going to have them, their histories, on what they did in the military, and what they did when they came back on this website. And that's our presentation for tonight. If you have any questions, this would be a good time to ask. There's going to be 24 in the original batch, and they're going to be, they're beautiful, as you can see. And I also promised our township manager that we are going to have a special display of hometown heroes around Emmeline Tenell. Emmeline Tenell was, statue was dedicated in June of this year. And in his book, Emmeline writes in the very, in the forward part, "To all my friends, past and present, who helped me take these giant footsteps." Well, the first ones to help him was the Radnor High School Red Raiders, the football team that he played on at Radnor High School, graduated in '42. So basically, like the Blues Brothers, we're putting the team back together. Everybody who played football with Emmeline Tenell are going to be displayed on the polls here around the municipal building. So Emmeline won't be out here by himself, he'll be with his teammates. If anybody's ever been on a team, or had a shipmate, or band of brothers, our commander here was in the Army in Thailand, he was a forward observer in one of those little airplanes. He knows what it means to have a shipmate, a band of brothers, a teammate. So Emmeline's going to be reunited with his teammates, and that'll happen before the end of the football season, so I promise you that. That's our presentation. I hope I didn't go over five minutes, but God bless you, and God bless the United States of America.
Thank you. Marty, thank you very much. Just a quick question. Fabulous program, and the one gentleman graduated with my son, so I think it's great.
It is great.
Are you still taking donations for this program?
Oh, yes, yes. Still taking donations, just mail it to Radnor Township in care of, I usually have them addressed to the Township Secretary, and on the memo, put hometown heroes. But any amount would be, would be nice. We just turned in another $1,620 tonight. I think that brings it over to several thousand dollars. And one more thing, this isn't limited to veterans. And I was talking to the police chief earlier this morning, early this afternoon. This also includes police officers. It's up to the police department to pick these out. What great police, we've had some great police officers here, we still do. But I've been around so long, I remember when Mo Hennessy was a rookie. So if anybody knows, and you know what I'm talking about, John, that's how old I am. And so these are some of the ones that we want to recognize as heroes in this township. They came back from the wars, and they became police officers. So they served twice.
And firemen.
And firemen. And that's correct, District Commander Hatton. Firemen are the same thing. We're going to have to have the fire chiefs and the officers of the fire department pick out who they want to be these heroes, because let's face it, they are our heroes. 365 days a year, you know, for decades and years. So let's help them pick out the men and women who deserve these honors. I thank you again.
Thank you, Marty.
God bless.
Thank you for all your hard work on this project. It's been great. Thank you. Hey, any other public comment?
And Sherry, Wayne. Interesting clock. I don't know when this board thought it was a good idea to stick what looks to be a shot clock in the face of people speaking at a lectern, but what I would say is, that doesn't really encourage people to come forward if they're going to be looking at a red LED display, counting down, or conversely, counting up, when they take the time out of their day to speak to this board. I'll note that for decades, we've had Board of Commissioners meeting, and it has never really been an issue insofar as people speaking at the lectern, until Elaine Paul Schaefer became president, and thereafter, Jim Higgins and you, Ms. Borowski. The problems seem to really be more in terms of behavior on the dais, as opposed to coming from the lectern. And that brings me to my point, is why I'm speaking here tonight. A couple days ago, as you all are likely aware, a lengthy article was published in the mainline Suburban Life regarding Exhibit 6, and in particular, how this document, which was a confidential ethics board document that got leaked, and thereafter weaponized against a sitting commissioner on the eve of an election, an election that was decided by three votes, how certain people up on this board had information about how that document was used, and nevertheless, failed to provide that to John Rice, who was tasked by this board to conduct an investigation. And an investigation that I believe cost this township in excess of $6,000. Now, for those who have not read Linda Stein's excellent article, there are a couple portions of it that I'd like to read. It states here that Mccone, that's Doug Mccone, he's the individual who signed the complaint that attached Exhibit 6, was interviewed by John Rice with Commissioners Jake Abel and John Nagel present. In that interview, as documented by Rice, Mccone said that he, quote, "came into possession of the color-rhino letter," that became Exhibit 6, "at a political meeting at the home of former Commissioner James Higgins. A folder with the letter was passed around, but Mccone claimed that he did not know who brought it to the meeting, or how it was obtained. Mccone's attorney told Rice that Mccone thought that the letter was widely distributed, and its contents were, quote, 'public knowledge.' Also Higgins assisted Mccone and Bowdrey in filing the ethics complaint against the commissioner, Mr. Booker," Rice said in his letter. Commissioner John Nagel was also present at the political meeting where the letter came to light. And then Nagel is quoted as saying, "I think this whole thing is a huge distraction. There were other things in the Mccone complaint that were valid. This is just a way of taking all the air out of the thing, so all we talked about is this bogus letter." Now, John Rice's report is publicly available on Radnor Township's website, and nowhere in there is any indication that John Nagel, who was at this meeting, came forward and provided John Rice with that information, or Higgins for that regard. These two men were involved in taking what they knew to be a confidential document, and weaponizing it against the fellow commissioner, knowing that that document had been leaked, and nevertheless, never came forward with that information, unless they did, and John Rice is too incompetent to put it in a report, which I don't believe. As problematic as John Rice is, I couldn't possibly believe he would leak something like that out. So what happens? This township goes down a rabbit hole in terms of an investigation. We spend thousands of dollars, and Jim Higgins, despite you all knowing this...
You have a minute, Mr. Sherry.
...is recognized, sorry, the clock's not on, is recognized by the Board of Commissioners...
Mr. Sherry, you have less than a minute.
...two weeks again, two weeks ago. Two weeks ago, he's recognized. Now, why would this board, knowing what it now knows about Jim Higgins, that he assisted Doug Mccone in taking a leaked confidential document and weaponizing it against the commissioner on an eve of an election, why would they choose to recognize that man? It's outrageous. And again, demonstrates that this board, whether it's keeping on Phil R., despite knowing that he's being criminally investigated for child pornography, or not voting unanimously to revoke Bill Spingler's Township Award after he is convicted for multiple indecent sexual attacks, it doesn't have its priorities straight. Instead, like we see here tonight, the big reveal is not accountability in the form of taking John Nagel to task for wasting thousands of dollars of this township, it's instead putting a big red LED clock out. It's wrong.
Mr. Sherry, your time is up. Thank you very much.
And thank you for awarding Jim Higgins.
Any other public comment?
Hi, Kelly Martin, 7th Ward.
Good evening.
Good evening, excuse me. I was disappointed you switched the agenda around. You were supposed to do the swearing-in of the police officers. All their families are here, the press is here, and you've moved public comment up ahead of that, which was the same problem two weeks ago, when that happened. So I'm not sure what caused the change in the agenda. But I think it's disrespectful to all the families. We have Judge Osborne here, and multiple people who are here specifically for the swearing-in. So there was no explanation to why number nine became number two, just tonight, after you all came out, but I'm curious about that. And the other thing is Exhibit 6. So it's been over a year since the Exhibit 6 paper wound up in a baloney ethics filing against a commissioner on the eve of an election. We've asked numerous times, at times, you were not here on the dais, but Jim Higgins was, and as was Commissioner John Nagel. And this is over 365 days, over $6,000 of township taxes that were spent on this investigation. The time, the energy that went into this, while Commissioner John Nagel could have simply said, "I was sitting in Jim Higgins' home at the table while this entire complaint was filed." He could have simply said that. And instead, he said, he wished I would stop speaking, and he said that he doesn't represent me. And none of this was rebuked by you, Commissioner Borowski. So I think for the township to go on a 365-day hunt for who leaked a document, to this day, we still don't know who did that, but we know who used it. We know that Jim Higgins, James Bowdrey, Doug Mccone, and that Commissioner Nagel was at the table while they were planning this strategic Democrat takeover of the board, trying to get rid of a commissioner that was voted in by his constituents. It's not the place of any of you to undermine the other. So each of you are equally voted in by your constituents. I think that action needs to be taken on this. I'm surprised that after this much money and this much time was spent, that it didn't warrant being in old business, in new business. As many people in the township are talking about this, that this has not come up, and hasn't been a priority for this board to communicate with the public, yet there's an article out in the press about it, is really disappointing to me. So I hope that this will be addressed by the board, and I would assume that some action would be taken against, I'm sure, Jim Higgins and also John Nagel for both being aware and wasting our money. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
If I may, to the question about whose decision this was, I approached the board about moving the public comment, because I knew Marty Costello was coming here to speak on this item. I will say that for the new officers that are being sworn in, to be able to hear some of the history and to hear about heroes, I think is well worth the time for the adjustment. So if there's anybody to blame, that's me.
Thank you. All right. No additional public comment? Then we will move on with our ceremonies for this evening. And again, thank you all very much for being so patient, and I think this is going to be the best part of the evening, so. Mr. Zankowski? Superintendent Flanagan? Lieutenant Dietrich?
Thank you very much for being here this evening. Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to recognize some individuals for their service and performance. First of all, I know Ray Daly is here. Ray, if I can ask you to come up? I know Ray had retired from the township after spending 13 years with Radnor, with building and code enforcement. I know a lot of times that job is not very popular, it's not received very well, when you actually have to tell codes and building items that you can't do some things. So Ray, I'd like to ask Ray if he'd come forward, and I know Ray doesn't probably want to come forward, but we'll ask him to come forward anyhow. One of the doors, I think he'll be coming in. While we're waiting for Ray, I just want to say thank you to the candidates that'll be sworn in tonight. The process is not an easy one to get through here, and I'm sure most of you probably recognize that it was a difficult process that you went through. Our police officers here, I think, are second to none anywhere in the Commonwealth, or to any community anywhere, of the level and standards and the performance and how extremely proud I am of them. I know those who have gone through the process over the last eight years will probably tell you, it's not an easy process to get through. We make it uncomfortable for you. We do that on purpose. A lot of that is to see how well you will perform under pressure. So all of you have done a tremendous job of that, and no hard feelings against anybody there, there's the process that goes through. So, but thank you for that. Ray?
Madam President, I ask permission to have the audience rise as we have the colors under the boardroom. I'd like to invite Andrew Howell. He is the founder of the Race for Peace. To the podium, please.
We're here this evening to present Superintendent Chris Flanagan the Race for Peace Award. This guy, when I see Chris Flanagan, I see a father, I see a husband, I see a human being being human. And I love this guy, I love this township for supporting the Race for Peace, the Commissioners, all respected to you guys. I'll let Chris, well, first I'll read the award, of course, Chris. Certificate of Appreciation presented to Superintendent Christopher B. Flanagan, Radnor Township Police Department. Race for Peace Committee presents this certificate in recognition of your active participation and support in the mission of peace and humanity. We love you, Chris.
Thank you.
Chris asked me to share a little bit about Race for Peace. Race for Peace is an organization started by Andrew Howell, over a conversation of how do we improve police and community relations. And so it started with a conversation between an activist and a chief in Lower Merion, and it developed into now a wide-reaching organization where we are in, I think, nine, 10, 10 different departments throughout Philadelphia area, in the five counties, along with tons of townships and tons of different cities getting on board. And so the whole point is to get everybody together and create a conversation of peace. So everybody from pastors, to chaplains, to police chiefs, to activists, to... So everybody from pastors to chaplains, to police chiefs, to activists, to politicians, and including the community, get everybody together and just have a conversation. And we've seen some great things come out of it, and it's, Chris has been foundational for this organization to do. So he has deserved all the praise that we give him. Let's give him praise.
Just want to thank everybody and the support the Board and Mr. Zankowski give us to do this. New officers, you couldn't hear a better story about it, community outreach and how we interact every way possible to meet new challenges in today's world. We'll go over that more. Just for the residents, we're going to post on the website, there is a main event coming up where all the Race for Peace Committee members will host a major symposium, so that'll be posted tonight after this. And to the staff that surprised me, I'll see you tomorrow. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
I'd like to ask Officer Kyle Hand to come to the front, please. We're awarding Officer Hand the letter of commendation for his efforts in resulting in getting a handgun off the street. I'm just going to read the award to you. On Tuesday, July 3rd, 2018, Officer Kyle Hand conducted a traffic stop for a suspended registration on East Lancaster Avenue by the I-76 overpass. Subsequent to the stop, he approached the vehicle, made contact with the operator, and immediately smelled the odor of marijuana. The operator denied the presence of drugs in the vehicle, however, due to the strong odor, the operator was asked to exit the vehicle. A cursory search of the vehicle's interior resulted in discovery of marijuana and paraphernalia consistent with the distribution of narcotics. The operator's person was searched and netted a large sum of cash, several thousand dollars. An ensuing and more thorough search of the vehicle yielded a large amount of illicit pills, marijuana, several thousand more dollars of United States currency, and a loaded 9mm semi-automatic handgun. It was an underused gun, it was an illegal gun, and he was a convicted felon. Now, therefore being resolved, the Kyle Hand of the Radnor Township Police Department is awarded the letter of commendation for an act of valuable community service, demonstrated initiative, and perseverance, where the efforts of the officer resulted in the heightened public safety to the community of Radnor Township. Congratulations, Officer Hand.
Just a note about the Hand family. His parents, Stephen and Beth, are seated in the audience, longtime volunteer firefighters. His two brothers served the city of Chester as paid firefighters, one as a captain and one as servant as a firefighter. So the Hand family gets a job done in Delaware County, for sure. Thank you. We're going to continue on with the program. Madam President, we have one open vacancy in the Radnor Police Department for the position of lieutenant. We request the Board consider nomination of Joe S. Pinto to be promoted from sergeant to the position of lieutenant.
So moved.
I have a second.
I second.
Okay. All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor of the promotion of Officer Pinto to lieutenant? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes six to nothing with Commissioner Clark absent.
I'd like to invite Judge Osborne to the front, please.
As the judge walks up, I'll just give a quick history of Joe. Sergeant Pinto was promoted to corporal in December of 2005. He was actually started, I forgot to mention, in 1995 at the Radnor Police Department, promoted to corporal in 2005, promoted to sergeant in 2007. He's had several training classes and really helps us with our firearms program and also our deer program, which is a pretty unique and very involved process. He's a graduate of the Northwestern School of Police Management. Most importantly, Joe's family is here. His mother Barbara, his brother-in-law John Bastian, his father-in-law, I apologize, married to his wife Cindy for 15 years, and their wonderful family, which is one of Joe's biggest prides. Emma, 14, Jessica, 12, Mary Kate, 9, and Joey, 6. And they are going to help get their dad sworn in as lieutenant.
Well, once again, ladies and gentlemen, it's my honor and my pleasure to be asked to present oaths of office to officers and officials taking their positions newly. And so I particularly thank you, if you're the head of the deer program, because I've lost lots of plantings to deer, as I'm sure many of our residents have. So is there someone here holding the Bible this evening? Wonderful. And would you introduce your wife?
This is my wife Cindy.
Thank you.
Do you want me to stand here?
I want you to stand sort of over here, so that... There we go. All right. Please repeat after me. I, Joseph Pinto.
I, Joseph Pinto.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States of America.
That I am a citizen of the United States of America.
That I will uphold the Constitution and laws.
That I will uphold the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States and of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Of the United States and of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
That I will faithfully perform all the duties of a police lieutenant.
That I will faithfully perform all the duties of a police lieutenant.
Of Radnor Township.
Of Radnor Township.
And obey all orders from my superior officers.
And obey all orders from my superior officers.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We got him on.
Thank you.
Madam President, our next point of business today for the Police Department is to fill five open vacancies in the Radnor Township Police Department. This was a significant process. As the Township Manager mentioned, we'd like to have Lieutenant Dietrich come up, introduce the candidates to the Board of Commissioners.
I'll do them one by one. I'll call them up. The first one I'd like to call up is Irvin Faust. Come on up with your people you're going to be with. Mr. Faust has prior police experience as a full-time Villanova Police Sergeant and part-time officer in Rockland Borough. He's been awarded commendation for heroism from Villanova University in 2018. He has an associate's degree in justice from the Community College of Philadelphia. He has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Temple. He is currently completing his master's degree in public administration from Villanova University. And he graduated Delaware County Community College Police Academy. Faust?
Good evening. Congratulations. Thank you. Good evening. Okay. All right. Good evening. Who is going to hold the Bible for you this evening?
My mother. Her name is Jeanne Connor Faust.
All right. Okay. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Irvin Faust.
I, Irvin Faust.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States of America.
That I am a citizen of the United States of America.
That I will uphold the Constitution and laws.
That I will uphold the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
That I will faithfully perform.
That I will faithfully perform.
All the duties of a police officer.
All the duties of a police officer.
Of Radnor Township.
Of Radnor Township.
And obey all orders from my superior officers.
And obey all orders from my superior officers.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Kester? Today is Mr. Kester's birthday. Mr. Kester has part-time police officer experience in Eddy Stern Borough, Prospect Park, and the Full Cough Borough Police Departments. He's currently working towards his bachelor's degree in public safety administration at Newman University, and he graduated from the Delaware County Community College Police Academy.
Okay. Good evening. And who is here to hold the Bible and be with you tonight?
My girlfriend Maggie and my mom Kelly.
Okay. There you go. All right. Please place your hand on the Bible and repeat after me. I, Thomas Kester.
I, Thomas Kester.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States of America.
That I am a citizen of the United States of America.
That I will uphold the Constitution and laws.
That I will uphold the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
That I will faithfully perform all the duties.
That I will faithfully perform all the duties.
Of a police officer.
Of a police officer.
Of Radnor Township.
Of Radnor Township.
And obey all orders from my superior officers.
And obey all orders from my superior officers.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Grimm has prior police experience as a part-time officer in Collingdale Borough. He served as Collingdale Department's Certified School Resource Officer, or SRO. He's currently enlisted in the United States Army National Guard in the military police. He attended Delaware County Community College and Wesley College and has a total of 67 college credits, and he graduated Delaware County Community College Police Academy.
Good evening. Who's here with you this evening?
My mother, Pacey, and my girlfriend Maggie.
All right. Would you come over? All right. Please repeat after me. I, Michael Grimm.
I, Michael Grimm.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States of America.
That I am a citizen of the United States of America.
That I will uphold the Constitution and laws.
That I will uphold the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
That I will faithfully perform.
That I will faithfully perform.
All the duties of a police officer.
All the duties of a police officer.
Of Radnor Township.
Of Radnor Township.
And obey all orders from my superior officers.
And obey all orders from my superior officers.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call Nicholas DeMayo to the podium, please. Mr. DeMayo has prior police experience as a part-time officer in Dorby Borough Police Department. He attended Kutztown University and Delaware County Community College, where he has earned a total of 57, 56 credits, and graduated from the Delaware County Community Police Academy.
Good evening. And who is accompanying you this evening?
My mother Carly.
Wonderful. Please repeat after me. I, Nicholas DeMayo.
I, Nicholas DeMayo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States of America.
That I am a citizen of the United States of America.
That I will uphold the Constitution and laws.
That I will uphold the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
That I will faithfully perform.
That I will faithfully perform.
All the duties of a police officer of Radnor Township.
All of the duties of a police officer of Radnor Township.
And obey all orders from my superior officers.
And obey all orders from my superior officers.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
I'd like to call up William Meyer to the podium, please. Mr. Meyer has prior police experience as a full-time police corporal in Upland Borough Police Department. He has prior experience as a SWAT and motorcycle officer. He's a graduate of the Delaware County Community College Police Academy. He's the husband to his wife Teresa Meyer and the father of one, his daughter Madison Meyer.
Who is holding the Bible for you this evening?
My wife Teresa.
All right. Please repeat after me. I, William Meyer.
I, William Meyer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the United States of America.
That I am a citizen of the United States of America.
That I will uphold the Constitution and laws.
That I will uphold the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States and of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Of the United States and of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
That I will faithfully perform.
That I will faithfully perform.
All the duties of a police officer of Radnor Township.
All the duties of a police officer in Radnor Township.
And obey all orders from my superior officers.
And obey all orders from my superior officers.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That concludes our business tonight in front of the community. To the new officers, I think the most important thing besides having your family and taking that critical oath, that is so important to remember every day you go out on the job. But everybody who's sitting in the audience, if you look behind you, all the police officers who showed up, they don't know these guys or gals. They're all here to show a level of support. This family from the Radnor Police Department is behind you. There's several officers from other departments, so it says a lot about your integrity and your work performance, and we are here for you. We'll grow together. We want everybody to go home safe, and we're going to have a good time doing it and making sure our community is taken care of. Madam President, that's the end of our presentation. Permission to dismiss the colors.
Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you, everyone who may be seated. For the families and officers attending from outside communities and our personnel, please join us in the back. We have a little bit of a reception so we can get to know everybody and a tour of the police station. Thank you, Mr. Zankowski.
Could I get a five-minute, a motion for a five-minute recess?
Moved.
Second. Thank you and congratulations.
Uh-oh.
Stand by.
Social media activity here.
Everything good?
Beautiful to stay by.
Perfect. This president of the board.
It was a major undertaking and it was a great thing. I didn't know that was happening. I was like, what's the...
Did they surprise you?
They actually did. The lady's like, who's getting that award? I don't know what you're talking about. Absolutely. Yeah, so it was a good day. It was a great, great day. Yep. And not with a banner, so just like...
I don't know, do you want to give the... Yeah, yeah, give it to them. I'm good. I'm good. All right. All right. Can I get the... All right, let's get started. Can we get started? All right, what? Okay. Can we reconvene? All right. Bill, do we need the manager to get for this one, or are you... Should we wait?
Only the important...
Okay.
Lisa had really cleared it out, didn't it?
She did clear it out. No. Are we ready to get started again? Is everyone good? All right. Mr. Zankowski, are we ready to get started? You guys ready?
Yes, we are.
Okay, all right, good. Well, thank you all, and thank you again to the officers. I think I join all of my colleagues up here in saying what a nice way it is to start a meeting, and welcome to all our new officers, and congratulations to Officer Pinto as well, or Lieutenant Pinto as well. Okay, so next on the agenda here, we have appointments to boards and commissions. May I get a motion to appoint Dr. David Simmons to the Board of Health?
So moved. A second.
Okay, second. Is there any commissioner comment? Any staff comment to the appointment? Any public comment? All right. Seeing none, may I... All those in favor of appointing Dr. David Simmons to the Radnor Township Board of Health, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six to nothing with Commissioner Clark absent. Next, may I get a motion to appoint Mr. John McLaughlin to the Carfac Group?
So moved. Second.
All right. Is there any commissioner comment? Any staff comment? Is there any public comment to the motion on the floor? All right. All those in favor of appointing Mr. John McLaughlin to the Carfac Committee, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six to nothing with Commissioner Clark absent. And to those who interviewed for some of the other positions that we had this evening, we are going to be making some decisions. We have one of our members absent this evening, and we will go ahead and make those appointments at our next meeting, which is currently scheduled for next Monday.
I'd like to add, for a lot of people out there, the beginning of the year, we will have turnover on the boards, where people have... Either they've decided they don't want to continue, or they finish two consecutive terms, which is in our charter as a limit. So there will be many more openings, and the staff will be producing a list of those positions, which we'll get on the website, and you'll be able to see if there's anything you're interested in.
And those, I think, who have already interviewed would certainly get first opportunity at those positions, at those openings. All right, next we have Finance and Audit. Presentation of the 2019 Township Manager's Recommended Budget Summary. Mr. Zankowski, Mr. White.
Thank you, Commissioners. I just want to say, I know Bill feels extremely bad that everybody left the room. He thought everybody would stay for his presentation, so I know he feels a little disappointed with that. But it's always a pleasure and an honor to present the 2019 budget to the Board of Commissioners. With it, you will find a 0% tax increase for the general fund, and as the Board of Commissioners had voted in 2018, or in '17, for '18, for a three-year 10% increase in the sewer rent, that is included in the budget to follow the board's policy as they voted on. I know that we will ask the board to meet often and frequently as we review this budget, but also into 2019, that we have a number of meetings to discuss many issues that are facing the township, and how we go about addressing those, and we look forward to the board setting those priorities, policies, and how we should address those to meet your requirements. We look forward to those meetings. One thing I can say, that the staff has worked extremely hard over the years. If we look back quickly at 2010, the staffing at that time was 136 full-time staff. We are now down to 127 employees, so we've reduced staff. We also took the audit findings with the help of this board and Carfac, from 28 down... 28 audit findings, which are significant, and as presented to the board earlier this year, it is down to zero now. And that is due to the efforts of not only Bill White, but also the Finance Department staff and all department heads for all their hard work and efforts. I want to thank the department heads for their putting this together, the time and effort that they put into this, and their countless hours of work and their commitment and dedication to the residents of Radnor Township. We look forward to these budget discussions going forward, and as the board again defining for us your collective and collaborative goals, priorities, and policies for us to administer and accomplish on behalf of the board. Bill, I want to thank you for all your hard work and efforts. I know it was difficult for everyone with a new software package that has been installed here to try to get that figured out and try to put the budget within that, but to put that all together. So, Bill, I want to thank you for your efforts on this, and from this point, I will stop me speaking, and, Bill, I will turn this over to you.
All right. Thank you, sir. And I, too, would be remiss if I didn't thank the other department heads. I know that echoing the sentiments regarding the software change, that we're riding a pretty steep learning curve, and doing so on top of the day-to-day things that all the department heads are doing anyway, which we know just how busy they are with all the meetings and time in the evenings and all the meetings that they go to. So I, too, am very appreciative. I think everyone with regard to the software has done a fantastic job, so... And it'll only get better as we learn more about it. Ian, if we could switch over to the laptop, I will step through the presentation. I've got a lot more detail in here than I'll go into tonight. I understand this is the first time everybody's seeing this. That is not unusual. This is usually what we do, is we introduce the numbers from a 30,000-foot view. Tonight, we have a hearing scheduled for a week from tonight, where we'll go into a little bit deeper dive, depending on the... Depending on the direction the board wants to go and different areas that we need a little bit more discussion and direction on. So if there are questions, go ahead and ask me. Otherwise, I'll get through this as quickly as you would like, and I'll go into as much detail as you'll allow. If you want a more abbreviated version, I'd be more than happy to do that, or as questions come up, we can get into more detail. So what's in the presentation is our major revenue and expense assumptions, as well as what we anticipate the 2019 activity being for the general fund. We have a capital plan summary. For those board members who have been through this a few times, that discussion will sound familiar. We're in the same position this year as we've been for the last few with regarding to how we're funding our capital or not funding. The Sanitary Sewer Fund has been getting a lot of discussion for the last 12 months. That's still an item that needs a lot more discussion and direction on. We still have our Park and Open Space Fund. I'll get into details regarding the bonds, the voted bonds that are there, and then the next steps to get us from where we are tonight to the budget's adoption at the first meeting in December. So our major revenue assumptions, as the manager had discussed at the top of the presentation, we're not proposing any real estate tax increase at this time. With regard to our business taxes, and I'll get into more detail on this here in a moment, we are forecasting what would be considered a recovery. For the last two years, we've seen those dip down a little bit. So for 2019, we're estimating activity going back to basically 2015 levels. So it's not growth, but it's returning back to a level that we had a few years ago. And then with regard to the departmental revenue and our intergovernmental funds that we get through other resources, we're anticipating the same levels of revenue there as we've received in the past. With regard to the Sanitary Sewer Fund, as the manager pointed out, we have included the 10% increase in the rate that was approved by the board last year when the budget was But as the note on the slideshow says, there's still a lot more discussion, as we'll see with how that fund is going to be funded going forward. Then there's the Stormwater Fund. There's no adjustment in the fee. That has been at $29 per unit since it was adopted by the board back in 2013 or '14, and for 2019, it's proposed to be the same again. And then finally, the Park and Open Space Fund. We'll talk a little bit more about how to fund that. I won't go into a lot of detail here. Basically, the township's revenues are made up of three broad categories. We have our real estate taxes, where the board sets the millage rate annually. We have the township's Act 511 taxes, which has remained at three mils since its adoption decades ago. Those revenues are based on gross receipts of the business activity here in Radnor, as well as employment counts and the real estate transfer tax. And then we have all other revenues, which is a big chunk. The biggest piece of that part of the pie includes our sanitary sewer rent and stormwater, which combined is roughly $6 million. And again, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail. That just takes all the revenues and breaks it down into a little bit more detail. When we talk about our millage rates, we understand that Radnor is one of the three tax, real estate taxing authorities here. We have the school districts and the county, and then the township. The township continues to be the lowest of the three millage rates, with the county and the township being significantly lower than the schools. And the table on the left, as you look at it, demonstrates that the township has only had two tax adjustments spanning those seven years, with the adjustment in 2016 being directly related to the park and trail bonds that were issued late in 2015. So operationally, the last tax increase on the real estate side has been in 2012. Going into a little bit more detail about the general fund, the size of the activity is going to be roughly $34.5 million. That's our revenue projections. This takes those revenues and divides them up into some broad spending categories with our debt service, the township's pension obligations, the funding that we're including for the OPEB piece of the benefit levels, or the unfunded liability, I should say. for the OPEB piece of the benefit levels, or the unfunded liability, I should say, our capital expenses, and then the last piece is the operational number, and then a net revenue. So, you'll see that the net revenue, as it stands today, is a negative $340,000. This is, I think, the first time since going back to 2011 or '12 where the net revenue and our initial projection was negative. At this time, we're not recommending a tax increase to correct that. Given all of the other things that we need to talk about or need direction on financially, it could be that that net revenue gets resolved in another way. And the township has significant cash balances to cover that gap for a year, and that's why we have the cash balances, is to be able to withstand this kind of number in a short period of time because of the fluctuation in the business taxes. And a lot of credit for that goes to the Commissioners who adopted that fund balance policy, as well as Carfac, who we worked with in coming up with the policy. And we're seeing it in action for 2019. The township has some financial flexibility as a result of it. I won't go into a lot of detail here. Again, this is just showing a historical trend of where the revenues have been. The one item on this slide I will touch on, just because of its significance, is you can see with the Act 511 taxes in '15, we were roughly at $14.5. We dipped down to $12.5 this year. So, we've had a number of large refunds that is driving the number this year. We anticipate next year not having those refunds, so that's why we're proposing a little bit more of a recovery number of 14, a little over $14 million. But you could see, just quickly looking at it, that for a period of time, from 2011 to '15, we saw rapid growth in the business tax. And basically, since 2015, it's been pretty stagnant at the same $14 million plus or minus. And still, over that time, there hasn't been real estate tax adjustments to compensate. Really quickly, on the expense side, for departments in terms of headcounts, these are based on a reorganization that we've been discussing throughout this year. Obviously, some of that is still in flux, as it hasn't been adopted by the Board yet, and those discussions are ongoing. But as the manager pointed out in the opening, overall, headcounts are not expected to change dramatically going into next year, or at least we're not budgeted that way. On the payroll side, the wages are estimated at 2 and 3/4% increase. Those are tied to our collective bargaining agreements with both our civilian and our FOP labor groups. Healthcare, we've already been informed with, by Divot, that there should be no increase going into 2019, so that number will stay the same, which is significant, that's a significant amount, so not increasing is very helpful. And then, at the last meeting in September, we talked about the MMO for next year, so those numbers are built into this. With regard to the OPEB funding plan, we are, I won't go into a lot of details about the plan, but 2019, according to the schedule, would have been a $1.2 million and some change payment into the OPEB funding plan. What we're recommending, at least out of the box here, is to suspend that for one year, again, due to the fluctuation on the business tax revenues and in conjunction with some of the other major items that, as a township, we need to discuss and get direction on with capital funding, sanitary sewer, and some of those larger items. That's what we're proposing at this time. And then, finally, the capital plan. The only portion of the capital plan that's in the budget at this point is the pay-as-you-go. That's been consistent over the last couple of years. We've included the pay-as-you-go piece, which includes all of the fleet vehicles, as well as the departmental equipment replacements. And all of the details associated with that will be included in the budget document when it gets published later this week. The pay-as-you-use portion, which is our longer-term infrastructure-type assets, still without a funding source or a permanent funding source on that, those amounts for any of those capital projects are not included at this time. So, as we step through that in our budget hearings later on, we'll have to come up with a way to fund those that the Board wants to proceed with. Some other operating areas that we'll look for Board decision and direction on, in meetings leading up to tonight's presentation, the Radnor Fire Company has approached the administration requesting another $250,000 in operating to help support their operations as a result of declining volunteerism and the need for more paid staff. So, that 250, at this point, is not included, but it is listed up here as something that we'll have to consider as we put the final budget together. And then, with our community organizations, this list is the same as it's been for years with regard to the library, the senior center, and the art center proposing roughly a 3% increase. These are all rounded to the nearest hundred. And then, with the Historical Society of Repairs and Suri remaining at the amounts, and those amounts have been steady for a few years now. Real quickly, with regard to debt service, this table and graph shows, again, the historical trend of where we've been with debt service in total for the township. For 2019, we're following the same amortization that's been in place for years. The only new borrowing that is not part of these numbers yet is the one that we're moving forward with on the Sanitary Sewer Fund now. So, that will be specific to the Sewer Fund and won't impact the general fund or any of the other funds. But as you can see, the debt service for the township remains relatively consistent.
Bill, before you leave that, could you go back? At the last meeting, we discussed significant sanitary sewer assessment and possibly additional capital expenditures. Is there any plan to change this for 2019, or is that not going to be a 2019 item?
Well, the Board has already given us direction to proceed with a smaller note, roughly $4.5 million, to help fund some of the more immediate emergency projects that have popped up on us. That is the only piece that we're proceeding with now. I don't have those numbers. We'll know them next Monday. And once we know those, they'll be part of what we're presenting for the Sewer Fund. And when we get into the larger capital discussions, sewer, as well as the non-sewer-related capital projects, we'll probably have a larger discussion about other funding sources.
So, your view at this point is that the results of this assessment, assuming that there's additional capital that will be requested to upgrade the system, that that won't get into the 2019 budget, the debt service would be a 2020 item?
Well, for the $4.5 million, that will be in the 2019 budget.
Right. Aside from the $4.5, the $4.5 is really for reimbursement for prior emergency expenditures that were already made. I'm talking about for any upgrades.
Yeah. Well, yes, that's our position at this point. You'll see in the numbers that the increase in the rent for next year isn't going to generate the revenue necessary to really move forward with the larger capital plan. There's a lot going on on this slide. The only thing I'll touch on is this is just a graphical look at the township's current debt portfolio through maturity. You can see, the Park and Open Space is tied specifically to the township's purchase of open space. The other funds are an aggregate of all of the other bonds being paid down by the different funding sources. The one thing that I'll point out is that in 2020, there is a significant, or a half a million, roughly, reduction in the general fund's portion of the debt service. We had talked about with Carfac a few years ago, they had made a presentation that that drop might present an opportunity for funding capital, either through a bond issue, and we use that half a million to pay down the new bonds, or that half a million just goes directly and we use cash or some combination thereof. But not for 2019, but for 2020, that reduction is coming. And again, this is another slide where there's a lot going on. I'm not going to go into detail, but what this does is it takes the township's expenditures and breaks it down into a little bit more detail by category, so you can get a trend on where some of the larger expenses are going or have been compared to what we're presenting for 2019. And then, this is the last slide for the general fund. It just shows a quick operating statement, revenues and expenses, and where we think that they'll be. I'll, just real quickly, where we were a year ago presenting the 2018 budget, we had a $1.2 million surplus that we were anticipating. The combination of the business taxes not materializing, or the refunds going out the door, in addition to the general fund having to transfer money over to the Sewer Fund to fund those capital projects, that number's turned around quite a bit on us. The $4.4 million negative that we're forecasting for 2018 does not include the reimbursement from the Sewer Fund to the general fund yet. I didn't want to conclude that until I saw the numbers, and we have a definitive plan. So, at this point, that $4.4 is worst-case scenario. When we're able to return some of that money to the general fund, that'll improve that number dramatically.
Just before we leave this, related to the prior point, when we had the sanitary sewer repairs that were for King of Pressure Road, and there was a couple of other ones, I thought the number was closer to $3.1 million or $3 million in emergency expenditures. And you just talked about a note at $4.5 million, which would cover that. What's the number that is used for the reimbursement for the emergency repairs that were, I think there were three of them? So, isn't that $3 million, or is that $4.4?
Well, a year ago, we were talking about $3.5 million, and that's this number included here on the budget. Again, in 2018, we had a couple other pipes pop on us. We've had to direct even more general fund money over, so that's where we're...
For the sewer, for the same projects?
For the same program, yeah. Different, new projects.
New projects.
That we, yeah, that came up this year.
So, that note you're talking about is now you're looking at $4.5 million?
Well, yeah, the language says "up to," and we're including the cost of capitalization and giving us some flexibility in terms of, it's an RFP, so we're not entirely sure where the numbers are going to come in at. So, I'm using up to $4.5 million. That'll be the high, that'll be the high amount. It could be lower. But it started with the $3.5 from last year and has grown again this year. And then, for 2019, this is the $341,000 negative net revenue as the numbers stand today. Switching gears to the capital plan, the pay-as-you-go, this is just a high-level summary on where those dollars are being directed. So, for 2019, there's a little less than $1.5 million included in the general fund's expenses for the purchase of these capital, the capital items included in these categories. Again, the actual budget document will go into detail down to the vehicle or piece of equipment that's being replaced. So, that'll be included in the final budget document. And as we've done in prior years, we've tried to keep these numbers pretty consistent year over year. And they do fluctuate, as some vehicles age better than we thought they would, and other vehicles die faster than we thought they would. So, these numbers do fluctuate. But roughly $1.5 to $1.35 million per year is where we're landing in terms of the pay-as-you-go piece. The other category is the pay-as-you-use, or the longer term. This is our infrastructure, traffic controls, our buildings, park improvements. Right now, there's roughly $2.5 million in projects that have been identified that need a funding source. Again, the budget document will go into detail on what these projects are. Usually during our budget discussions, this area gets a lot of discussion, and the number usually moves around quite a bit before we ultimately land on a plan. But as of now, we've identified projects that have come forward, either through our own planning or throughout the year, with either one of the Board's subcommittees or projects that have come up through the Commissioners themselves. This is for your reading pleasure. This just goes into more detail about what those different capital purchases are. With regard to the Sanitary Sewer Fund, again, we've talked quite a bit about this over the years. The sewer rent rate had been at $5.90 for a number of years, and it, based on the water consumption, was not generating enough in revenue to cover the expenses that we were experiencing. I talked last year about one of the areas of expense that has gone up significantly over a longer time period now, but the RHM payment from, you know, $3 million to $4.5 per year, that's a million and a half of new expenses required of that fund, and the revenues have not been able to keep pace with that. The other element to the revenue that is generated is the water consumption. And this graph on top is showing what the water consumption has been since 2010. Through 2018, these are actuals. So, you can see from '11 to '18, there's been a pretty steady decline in water consumption. In fact, the Board increased the sewer rent fee from 2017 to 2018 by 10%, and because water consumption decreased the way it did, it only generated $200,000 in new revenue, which was not significant in terms of what was needed to cover the expenses in that fund. So, as I bring this up, as we planned for this and planned for this utility, the rent rate is only one of the components, and we'll have to be careful on how we forecast. It just, and I don't want to bore you with more details, but we can, I could show you a sensitivity analysis that even a very slight modification in where our projection on water consumption can drive a pretty significant revenue gap. So, as we forecast that out, we'll just have to be very mindful, Bill.
Can I just have a quick question? If our consumption rate is going down, why is our rent, why does our rent continue to go up with RHM? Or the cost we pay, what we pay RHM?
Well, the meter, the amount of flow going through the meter at RHM continues to go up, and their operating expenses go up.
When you have a wet year like this, people don't order their lawns as much. And that's metered.
Bill?
But RHM is actually flow in the sewer.
Bill, what's the reason for the steady decline? I mean, I thought we have population growth in the township. It just seems, yeah, I get that it was a real wet summer and fall so far, but just, is there a reason?
Well, we can, I mean, we continue to look at it. Kind of like with the business taxes, we just have not found a good correlating indicator that'll tell us what future consumption might look like.
No, but why? I'm just wondering what the reason for the trend is. So, when you look at the prior years, why, you know, why it's falling? If that's indicative of another issue down the road? If we're losing revenue here, you know, we're not using as much water? Is there just less commerce? Are there less people? What, just so we can kind of forecast what it would be indicative later on?
And also, while you answer that, Bill, your projections for '18, '19, and '20 don't seem to jive with your 2017 actuals. So, why are you showing it that way? That's what's causing the alert to everybody.
Well, the, so, again, the 2018 number is an actual number. That's not a forecasted number. The numbers that are forecasted are '19 through '23, and that is an Excel function that takes 2010 through 2018 actual and plots it out based on the returns of those years. So, basically, what it's doing is it's capturing the downward trend and carrying it forward into future years.
But '18 is only nine months, right? Or is that a projection on 12 months?
Yeah, so the, no, I, well, I'm sorry. Okay, so, I understand the confusion. The 2018 is based on 2017 consumption. We get it a year late, or we bill on it a year late. So, the 2018 numbers are the, represents 2017 water consumption. We just have it identified as 2018 because that's, those are the numbers that were... as 2018 because that's, those are the numbers that we're billing off of.
Sorry, yeah, getting back-
But in terms of the question, Commissioner, that, as to why, again, I, we don't, I can't sit here and tell you exactly why the water consumption's going down. We get these numbers directly from Aqua based on their meter reads. There certainly, if you compare it to what's going on in terms of development and the permitting activity and those types of things that have gone on over the same period of time, they're inverse. So, yeah, again, I can't sit here and speculate why people are using less water. We're just getting the numbers from Aqua that tell us that people are using less water. And that includes not just our residential base, but also our commercial, because this is every property in Radnor.
But by the same token, you also said the RHM, the flow is increasing to RHM, which means it's a result of the infiltration and the, what is it? I and I, it's infiltration-
Inflow.
Inflow, inflow.
Yeah, I'm not going to jump in the engineer's pool, but they can go into a lot of detail about the I and I. We talk about it a lot in these meetings. We know it's an issue. When it does rain, that rainwater is getting in the system and is getting metered.
And we're demonstrating it because the water usage is going down, yet the total flow to the system is going up. So it has to be inflow and infiltration.
And as part of that, I think it shows that the age and deterioration of the system and the system is much worse than, because you can't see it, but it is much worse. So this demonstrates of what a bad system we have in the ground and how much, I don't, I don't think everyone realizes how much it's going to cost to replace all this system here. It's significant, huge dollars. And this demonstrates it. Plus, it is more costly to treat the materials coming out of the township as it works its way all the way down through Delco through, and eventually down to the city of Philadelphia. There are problems within the entire system which we will be responsible for. At some point in time, we will see an assessment come to us, which I think we will all choke on when we see what that number is. So costs are going to go up.
So you're basically saying that when it rains, we are getting water in our sewer system and that is what the flow is and that is what is causing us to have to pay more to RHM? Because we, how do, we are producing that flow?
That's what the-
The data I've seen at RHM meetings doesn't support that being the total answer. It's certainly a part of the answer. There, and Steve, I don't know if they share that information with you, but they can sit right there and watch our meter when we've had these heavy downpours and, you know, see what's going on. So I think it's a much more complex than that simplification.
But the, we get monthly reports from RHM and it's, so they show the average, the daily rainfall. And there's a direct correlation, the graph spikes on the heavier rainfall days. And it's not a one day spike. It goes up for a few days and takes some time to come down. So I think Mr. White, the I and I is an issue, operating costs with RHM, capital costs with them, but I and I is definitely a huge issue. You're paying to get that treated whether it's diluted sanitary sewer or not. It's all the same.
Okay, so again, this will, I'm sure, get a lot more attention and discussion going forward. And so this slide shows what the historical trends been for the sanitary sewer fund. This one takes a snapshot of what it might look like going forward. I won't, I won't, well, first of all, fix my commas because that'll drive me crazy. But I'll, I won't go into a lot of detail about the numbers behind this. We'll get into that as we go. In terms of the rate itself, we've incorporated the 10% increases that were approved by the board last year and then just held it, held the rate for the out years until we, you know, have a much more comprehensive discussion and direction on where this goes. But this provides some indication that the problem that we're looking at is not something that simply using a little bit more water is going to fix. It's a system-wide solution that we need to come up with. So this is just pointing out that as we go forward, we're going to need to spend some more time with the sanitary sewer fund. It'll be, depending on which direction the board wants to go, in terms of our budget window we're in now, the rate adjustment was voted on a year ago. At least that piece we'll have to consider again going forward. And then perhaps we spend a little bit more time, as the manager indicated, in early parts of 2019, getting into a lot more detail about how we're going to manage this fund going forward in terms of the capital projects, the operations, and what policies the board wants to set on the operation of this piece. The last major item is the Park and Open Space Fund ever, going back to when the board borrowed the money for the Ardrossan purchase, it was decided at that time to not enact the millage that was voted on as part of that open space purchase. And instead, every year, as part of the budget discussion, talk about how we're going to fund that debt service. So what we present in the budget, what we've done in past years and what I've done again this year is we present the fund with two different scenarios. Either the millage enacted, which would generate enough to pay for the debt service on the Ardrossan open space bonds, or we use general fund transfers. For 2018, the board, or 2017, I'm sorry, 2016 and 2018, the board elected to transfer money. I have 180,000 highlighted for 2019 as that would be the amount needed to balance the fund based on what we're projecting the real estate tax transfer to be. But the other alternative is, we had talked about a year ago, the millage rate being .05 mils would generate a sufficient amount to cover the debt service. Actually, that might even be able to drop to .04 depending on what the assessment from the county might look like. Prior boards have not been interested in going this route. It's an option that's available to you. Instead, what the board has elected in the past were general fund transfers. So this table is the same data or the same forecast, just instead of real estate tax, we have general fund transfers. And you could see that the one thing about the general fund transfers on an annual basis, the amount does regress. And eventually, when we get to 2024 or '25, the open space bonds from 1990 will mature and the realty transfer tax, the annual revenue from that should be sufficient to cover the Ardrossan open space funds moving forward. So this is a, something that we'll have to deal with for the next five or six years. And then after that, it should, it should be sufficient, or self-sufficient. So this is another item that when we get to the final decisions on the budget, we'll need direction on from the board. So again, just to recap, the manager's not recommending any change in the millage rate for our operational or pay as you go capital. The stormwater fee, no change. We need direction with regard to the fire company, the community organizations, if the estimates used are acceptable to the board, the larger capital program, the sanitary sewer fund. We included the 10%, but as we know, there's more discussion needed for the longer-term outlook of the fund, not just 2019. And then as I just touched on, the Park and Open Space Fund. So the next steps, we will publish the township, the full document. And there'll be a pop quiz for our five newly sworn in officers on Friday, assuming they stay up all night Thursday night to read it. We'll put that on them. Otherwise, we'll be here a week from tonight. I think we'll be upstairs in the administrative area where the meeting will be recorded and then posted after the fact. It won't be live, but it'll be recorded. And then the board also scheduled a public hearing on November 19th. We'll introduce the ordinance or ordinances for adoption at the November 26 meeting, which will give us enough time to advertise for the December 10th for final adoption. So that's where we're at in terms of the next steps.
Bill, have you looked at our fee structure to see if any changes are going to be necessary this year?
Yeah, all of the different departments have gone through their respective areas. There will be a couple that we'll highlight when we get into a little bit more of the details. And then we're always open for discussions and recommendations if there are some that the board would like to see, so.
If I can just dovetail onto Bill's final remarks, there are items too, as Bill had mentioned, that we'll need direction and guidance from the board. Just to note several of them, as you're aware, infrastructure repairs and maintenance, significant dollars that are required, needed, we'll need to determine that priority. Township facilities, there are many of the facilities need new roofs put on them. We will need to find a funding mechanism for those, as well as probably one of the critical ones is the management and maintenance of our trees within the right of ways that we own. Seeing some of the initial reports that Matt Golez has been tremendous in volunteering for, there are a number of trees that have been determined as hazardous and close to that that need to be removed. Since we took those on, we also own the sidewalks that need to be repaired and replaced. It's been one of the items I know we've talked about annually. We're probably about 25 years behind schedule in the maintenance and management of the trees. So to try to get ourselves caught up, you know, it would look at somewhere between 2.5 to 3.5 million per year, we would have to invest in those unless there's a decision by the board to change the policy of who's responsible for the trees and the right of way. So that's, the task, we'll be looking for some guidance for, from the board.
Okay, thank you, Mr. St. Caskey, Mr. White. Does anyone on the board here have any questions before we move on? Everyone just want to wait to get your copy of the budget and delve into it? All right. Well, thank you very much. Will we also get this presentation as well? Will we get this, a copy of this?
Absolutely, yes. This will be posted to the website. I'll send it over tonight. It may be tomorrow morning, but I'll email the commissioners directly and then it'll be posted to the website as well.
Great, great. All right, well, thank you very much. Looks like we have a lot to discuss moving forward. Public Works and Engineering, Resolution 2018-117, Amending Resolution 2018-104, PennDOT Master Casing Project Initiation Form and Change Order. Mr. Norsini?
Mr. McNallys.
Mr. McNallys?
This is just a formality for PennDOT. They're asking for the authorization of the signature. We already agreed to the three-year term on the master castings agreement. This is for PennDOT when they're doing the state roads to replace the manholes while they're doing the roads on the state. And we get a discounted price. It's just a formality for a signature.
Okay. May I get a motion to approve Resolution 2018-117, amending Resolution 2018-104, PennDOT Master Casing Project Initiation Form and Change Order?
So moved.
A second.
Any commissioner comment? Any staff comment? Any public comment? All those in favor of Resolution 2018-117, amending Resolution 2018-104, PennDOT Master Casing Project Initiation Form and Change Order, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed? Motion passes five to nothing with Commissioner Clark absent and Commissioner Nagel off the dice.
Madam President, if I may just briefly, there are a number of residents, I think, within the Conestoga, Lowry's Lane area of Clemecrohn Park. Any of those neighbors there smelling natural gas, PennDOT hit one of the high-pressure lines there and it is, it's quite bad. And it has, the odor has gone in their repair of the sunken lateral there between both sides. I know Commissioner Farr, you've been trying to get those taken care of and fixed. And they were out doing the work today and they hit a gas line. So that's, if anybody knows, that's what that odor is from. And they are in the process of making the repair.
Sarda, do we have an ETA when that's going to be resolved?
Your guess would be as good as ours. It is a major line in which they did hit.
And sorry, and do you know if gas has been turned off to any of the homes?
Not that I am aware of that any of the homes have been turned off.
Okay, thank you. All right, item C, Ardrossan Phase Two Caucus Amendment to Previously Approved Final Plan. Mr. Norsini?
Thank you, Commissioner. So tonight we have David Falcone and Edward Scott representing Ardrossan Phase Two. This is for Ivy Lane. These are amended plans and they will also be following up with a Phase Three presentation. So I'll leave it to Mr. Falcone.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Falcone.
It's good to see everyone again. Everybody's looking well. We'll not be singing tonight. The plan tonight before you all is a Phase Three plan that we are- Is it Phase Two first?
Phase Two's up first.
Strike that. We'll go with Phase Two then. I have an equally attractive plan for that phase. I don't actually, I have no plan for that. Do you have the Phase Two plan? No. So this is for the polyg and of the site. When this was initially approved as part of the land development application, the setbacks shown on the plan were consistent with single lots, which at the time were, were part of the approved plan. Since that time, uniform plan community has been placed on this property, a regime that's permitted pursuant to the ordinance and pursuant to code. Once that regime was placed on to the property, the zoning ordinance allows for a reduction in those side yard setbacks. Doesn't increase the number of units. It simply allows for the homes to be placed slightly closer together. That's in 280, Section 97D of the zoning ordinance. We are simply amending our plan to be compliant with that section of the ordinance now that the uniform plan community has been placed on the property. There'll be no other substantive changes. Again, there's no additional lots here and no additional building. It's just about the way the homes are sited on the property. And again, this is compliant with your zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there any questions for Mr. Falcone?
Why do, why do it at all if you don't need to do it? What's-
Well, no, so we, we do need to do it because that's the way the homes are going to be built on the site. When you place a planned community on the property, you're, you're allowed to utilize the benefits of that planned community. However, as you know, when the plan was initially approved, this portion of the property was not part of the property. It was an additional piece of real estate that was added after that approval. So when you set up the community, Rich, you have to designate different areas of property that are deemed additional real estate by the code. And then as you acquire them as a declarant, those properties are allowed to be subject to that community. So once Eddie acquired this property, he subjected it to the Planned Community Act and therefore it is allowed to comply with these setback requirements. And that's how these folks are going to build their homes on this site.
So the people are going to build these homes closer together?
That's correct.
And the homes are not going to be any bigger?
There's no additional lots. They're still, they're still compliant with the codes.
But there will be additional square feet in the house?
I don't know, I don't know how big the houses are going to be. They're going to be code compliant homes. And again, this is a code compliant request.
Why is, why, why reduce the side setbacks though?
Because we can, under the code. It's our right.
And that will presumably do what? Wouldn't, wouldn't the people buying it not want to have closer setbacks on the side?
Apparently not.
Doesn't make any sense.
It might not.
If you're buying a house over at Ardrossan, you want to have as much side yard as possible.
The folks that are buying these lots are aware of these setbacks.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to see if there's any public comment. All right. Well, then I guess you can consider that caucus and we will then see you back in November?
Perhaps.
All right.
Maybe you'll see John by that point, but.
All right.
So now-
Onto Phase Three now.
Gave you a little teaser earlier. Now we're back to the lot, to the Lot Three, to the Phase Three lot changes, lot line changes. Again, what we have here is previously approved lots. And you see in Roger's letter that is dated September 24- dated September 24th. We are essentially eliminating one NRA lot, which was a not residentially approved lot, but which could have been subject to residential approval at some later date, and limiting the total number of lots that would be permitted in this phase. We are not increasing the square footage or making any other substantive change to the number of units that will be out there. From a negative perspective, we are simply eliminating the one NRA lot, continuing with the existing lots that we show for residential development and amending the lot lines to meet the desires of potential purchasers out here. There are purchasers that have made inquiries and are prepared to purchase some of these lots, subject to these changes.
Any commissioner comment on this? Is there any public comment? Okay. Well, I guess you are through caucus and we'll see you back here in November on this as well.
If they could all be that easy.
All right.
Good seeing everybody.
Thank you very much. Thank you, gentlemen. Item E, Ordinance 2018-13, introduction, an ordinance of the township of Radnor County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending Article Six Right-of-Way Management by adding a new Section 250-20 to provide for the elimination of visible obstructions within the right-of-way. And so I don't have to read that again, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve and then we'll discuss.
Second.
All right. With that, Mr. Nocini.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The salient points of this ordinance amendment is that it will allow the police and staff, the managers designate, so it notes the township manager, so who he designates to enforce the fact that you would be, people are unable to plant, erect, maintain, or allow to exist any tree, shrub, hedge fence, et cetera, or other obstruction near street intersections. So that's the site triangle we talk about. This will allow the township to enforce it, allow the township manager to enforce that. It also enforces the fact that a person cannot plant or install items within the township right-of-way and it gives an enforcement capability. It allows the manager or his designee to get the work removed if it should occur and add a 5% penalty. And the last part, again, which is also salient, no gas pumps, oil tanks, walls, fences, et cetera, shall be placed within the right-of-way. Any such obstruction shall be removed promptly by the owner. So this is all to give the Police Department, the Community Development Department, and the Engineering Department at the manager's direction, the ability to address site triangle issues. So when we get folks that call us about not being able to see at an intersection, we have the right to now measure and enforce if things need to be moved. It's not that we're looking for it, it's that if it should come up.
So, just a quick, I mean, haven't you guys been doing this anyway? I mean, I know I've had residents call me, concerns about, you know, bushes preventing people from seeing, pulling out, and you have done, been doing that.
So the previous, we did amend the right-of-way ordinance previously and some of this very specific language was somewhat muted, so now this is to make sure that it's very clear that all these items can be enforced should it be required.
Are people, is anyone, would people be grandfathered in? I mean, what if I already have a bunch of shrubs planted somewhere?
We're not looking, like I said, we're not looking for it, so if you had, if a resident had shrubs within the right-of-way, which many, many, many do, we're not saying we're going to go out and patrol to look for that. Really comes down to if we're at an intersection and there's a safety hazard for folks and things are planted there, we now have the ability, again, to enforce the fact that they must be removed for safety, for site distance.
The current practice, though, is to remove them after making contact with the owner, asking them to remove it, and if they don't, then you might come in and have the guys...
Absolutely, Commissioner Booker. The police are great. They go out and they make contact with the folks and work with them. This would only come into case if the resident did not wish to comply and that we have a way to enforce it. But Commissioner Booker's right, many folks address it on their own. We show them what the hazard is and they get the bushes lowered or removed.
My question is still kind of piggybacked with Lisa's. So is it, is stuff grandfathered in if you have a heritage tree or a bush? And how do you know what's new and what's old? It just seems that it's great for the safety aspect. I'm just wondering how it's enforced, because...
So we're not going to patrol right-of-ways to look for these items? If there's an issue at an intersection, that's where we would address it. So there's, like I say, there's many, many homes in many townships that have planted or installed things in the right-of-way. We're not saying we're going to go line by line and ask people to have them removed. So on a case-by-case basis, when it's brought to our attention or the Police Department's attention, that an intersection is hard to see, we can now do an analysis of that intersection and if there's something in the way, we could ask to have it removed. So as far as being grandfathered, from a safety standpoint, if a bush is in the right-of-way and it's blocking a site triangle, I don't know that you would consider that being grandfathered. If it needs to come out to make it safe for people to pull out from an intersection without getting hurt, that's really what needs to be done. And we've been doing this all along.
Sure, sure.
But again, it's not something we're patrolling, looking for.
No, 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 that's fine. And it would be entirely at the homeowner's expense.
That's correct, but there are remedies within the ordinance. If the homeowner did not do it and the township had to step in, there's a method to do that and a penalty.
Commissioner, if I may just add to that, the Police Department goes out and they do line of sight, vision, measurements and that, so there's, it's not just a, well, we think it is. That's why it always goes through and through our traffic enforcement unit, highway unit. They do all the measurements, they review it, they look at it, so it's not just, I think or whatever, that they will go ahead and do all that where there's a justification.
The site triangle is purely based on distance, height, and a specific angle. It's not subjective whatsoever.
Any other commissioner comment? Any staff comment? Any public comment? Okay. All those in favor of Ordinance 2018-13, introduction, an ordinance of the township of Radnor County of Delaware, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, amending Article Six Right-of-Way Management by adding a new Section 250-20 to provide for the elimination of visual obstructions within the right-of-way, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes five to one with Commissioner Clark absent.
You know, what's going to happen here is we're going to get calls when they, somebody's tree gets removed and I've already had it happen, so. And we have to be very careful with this exercise of the police power to remove people's bushes, you know. It's bound to generate some complaints, so that's my concern with it.
If it's the right-of-way, it's not their bush.
Except for they planted it and they've been tending it for 20 years.
All right, well, I guess, I guess I don't, you know, we've been doing this. I know I've had several residents call me about issues and the police are always very respectful and go out and speak to everyone, so I think as long as that process is the same. All right, well, we will have another opportunity to discuss this at our next meeting. Resolution 2018-118, authorization for the receipt of sealed bids for hazardous tree removal within township rights of ways and township land. Okay, second?
Second.
I'm guessing, is this going hand-in-hand with the other, with the one we just discussed?
No, this is for all the hazardous tree removal. There are going to be a number of trees that we're going to have to take down and this is something that we will need to bid and more than likely, it may end up with multiple vendors to be able to take down the number of trees that are anticipated that will have to be removed. There will be one that will follow at the next meeting that will deal with concrete replacement as well for sidewalks, because there are a number of sidewalks that have been broken by the trees in the right-of-way as well.
And these trees are hazardous because they will take out the electrical lines or houses or what's the hazard portion generally?
The tree is not in good health and will create a hazard to, it's existent as it sits, whether or not the tree will fall and the, also it would go back to your point, take power lines down, so it is, our arborist does the analysis and we'll review all these before any actions taken, because there are some, it's possible just by trimming and treating the trees, it can be done, but there are a number of trees that are going to have to be removed and this allows us to go out and competitively bid this.
Well, and in my area, we have particular problems with power outages, summer, winter, spring, and PICO will always say vegetation, trees, I mean, it's invariably, power went out because a tree fell. So I think this is something we need to really, really take care of because the people losing power is more dangerous than, we don't want to have people losing power because that can be dangerous to certain people in certain instances.
Bob, can we, can we add language to this resolution to where if a tree's taken down, we have some accountability? So there should be a report that goes to Shade Tree Commission and they have a record of what trees are taken down and the reason for it?
Sure, we can do that.
We do that. So Public Works provides a report every month of all the hazardous tree, or the trees that are taken down and this project would follow suit with whatever is removed. It will always be reported.
Perfect.
I have a question, Bob. Have you, as we get these bids to privately, have we looked to do it in-house with that? And I'm sure it's overwhelming, but then you have, this is a long project and a, going to take a long time, then we kind of have experts, people know what they're looking for. People that, you know, drive around every day and it's not, hey, we're taking this tree down, so there's a little bit more unity. Would that be something that maybe we should look at as well? Taking the bids and seeing what it would, if the Public Works would want to take a bite at it?
We could do that. This would be a good part of the conversation that we'll have during the budget and then even next year of how we're going to go about attacking this, whether or not it's our own staff compared to a contracted service, so I think that's a very good discussion to have.
All right, I just always to cross-train and to add jobs to the township, I think that's, you know, for something that is going to be utilized for a long time, this is not a, it doesn't sound like it's a one-year project, but to add, like I said, the jobs to the township, people that know the township, I think that it's one more special thing that's an intangible that we haven't...
We'll do that.
So it, these bids, so is this for work that's to be done in the immediate or is this for work to be done next year?
This is, as soon as it comes back, this is, as soon as the bids are approved by the board, we will get them going. So this is work that will be taking place as soon as awarded by this board.
And these are for trees that have already been identified by your arborist?
That's correct. And as part of the study that's being done too, the analysis of every tree and the right-of-way.
The one that Matt's doing.
Correct.
Okay. Well, you don't have to come and cut any down on Darby Paley Road because PICO's already taken care of that in a big way.
Well, I think it's part of this, we're going to have to realize that to, there are a lot of these trees, because they're PennDOT roads owned by them, that they do a, I will say modestly, a poor job at maintenance of the trees. We have to take down most of those because we do not, because they do not respond to it at all. So that'll be, PennDOT, so this is going to be another decision that how do we, are we going to get reimbursed by PennDOT? Because I know Steve, and he's Public Works Director, we send invoices to PennDOT and they just ignore them, so. But it's their roads, their right-of-way, so this is an expense the board's going to have to determine who's going to take care of those.
Well, how does this mesh with what PICO does?
PICO has their own vegetation management program and as you've seen in several areas, their trimming of the trees, which do meet the requirements of the Public Utilities Commission, when they lop off half the tree and let half the tree standing, it weakens the tree. Our arborist has said that, but the visual impacts are awful to this.
Over to Darby Paley Road and you can see how bad it is. I mean, they, it's horrible what they've done over there.
I think as part of this too, and I'm not sure, Commissioner Abel, if you're referring to this as a replanting program then too, that we, that trees that as we take down, that we would go back, so that would be also something we'll ask the board to make that determination.
All right, is there any additional commissioner comment on this?
Bob, could you just repeat what you were saying about the concrete?
We will come at the next meeting for bidding for the concrete repair of sidewalks. It'll probably be a per-block cost to be able to do that because there are a number of trees that have just blown out the sidewalks that when those trees come down that are determined as hazardous, which number of those are, we will have to then replace those sidewalks that have been broken up and damaged.
So the areas where Public Works has been out and they've spray painted yellow where it's been uplifted, that's what we're waiting for?
That's what we will do. Some of these we're going to go ahead and take care of because they are dangerous, so we're going to take care of those, but in the future here, when we have the big program of taking these trees down, we're going to have to have a contractor in place to be able to do this. We couldn't keep up with it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, just, I have one other question. So these trees have already been identified? We know what these trees, where these trees are, we know what we're looking at?
We have a, an idea right now of the trees that have been determined. I think this analysis of the trees that is currently being done, this study, will show that there are a lot more trees that need to come down.
And when they, when they're taken down, will, will replace as is required by, what is it, the shade tree ordinance where you have to replace and what is that?
Commissioner, usually what we do is, so the tree's removed, the stump is ground out, topsoil seed mulches installed, and then as the manager was talking about a tree replanting program, we go back, because maybe that tree that was removed, that's not the species of tree we want to put back there, or maybe that's not the exact location, so although connected, somewhat separate. One is to get rid of the hazard, address the sidewalks, and then as the manager said, with a tree replanting program. We used to do the big tree planting program based on trees that we remove such as this.
And I believe also to answer your question, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe a year ago, the Shade Tree Commission recommended the trees that could, permissible trees that could go back in and the ordinance was amended through their work so that there were some trees on there that shouldn't be planted, so they did a nice job in updating that, so there would be a selection that would be made to the homeowner so they could pick something that doesn't get into the sewers and doesn't get tangled up in the power lines.
Like those gum trees?
Those and silver maples and a lot of other trees that we have that are problematic.
Okay, but right now, the removal would, the replacement would be on the homeowner, whoever?
No, that would, that would be from our Shade Tree Fund.
Okay.
And I believe that's how we would look to fund these, because I think if we left it up to the homeowner, they more than likely may say, well, we're not going to replant it. We'll just leave it because of the problems in the past.
Do we partner with a conservancy on any of this?
It would be something that we'd look with the Shade Tree Commission to look at them heavily on this, but then also we could partner with the conservancy on this as well.
All right. Any additional commissioner comment?
If anyone's interested in seeing how this discussion goes, we're going to be talking about a lot of these issues Thursday night on Morris Road where one of the original street tree plans took place. A lot of those cherry trees are in a state of decay and we're going to talk about taking them down, replacing them, having them grow. So it's a discussion that will be had with the neighbors right on Morris Road. It should be, I mean, it should be a good discussion to get the issue started and see where the neighbors want to take it.
Thank you, Commissioner Abel. Any other commissioner comment? Any staff comment? Any public comment? All right, all those in favor of Resolution 2018-118, authorization for the receipt of sealed bids for hazardous tree removal within township streets, rights of ways and township land, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes six to nothing with Commissioner Clark absent.
Bob, how much are you anticipating what this is going to cost? Any range?
As of now, I think we're going to await that report and see what those numbers come into, but I know some preliminary numbers, it's very high. So I think what we want to do is go through that report, see the size of these trees, because if I'm anticipating number of these trees, they will be large in size and we could face a very expensive removal process for these trees.
And one more question. So you'll have, what, if we do it in-house, that costs, it'll be concurrent?
I would, I would think that if the board desires that, we could, we could start to put that analysis together.
Yeah. I would be for it, I don't...
Looking, you're looking for consensus on, sorry. You're looking for consensus on allowing you to put together an analysis of what it would cost to do this work in-house?
Correct.
Do we have the, do we have that capability right now to do that?
We could do that, we could put that together. It's just we would have to know what the work on this, with the maintenance of the trees, what's all required. So we could work with our arborist to help put that together for you.
Won't you have to rent some equipment too? You don't have all the equipment to pull down big trees, do you?
No, we don't. And there's quite a sign... And there's quite a significant amount of equipment we would have to buy. Because right now, there are cranes that are used to come in and take some of the big trees down.
Is our staff trained to do that? I mean, that's-
We, we would have to send people to be trained, or we'd have to hire people that are tree climbers. And if anybody has seen those folks and individuals hang on the top of those cranes and that, it's quite an acrobatic feat, so you have to be well-trained on that, so.
Is there a huge amount of liability to having that kind of operation as well?
Yes.
I mean, I, I'm for, I'm, as you know, I'm always trying to keep stuff in-house. And if it's not going to burden the public work staff too much, I think that just to compare would be, you know, it shows fiscal responsibility and transparency. I would, I would like to see it. I mean, it's got to get done regardless, and if we can do it in-house, I would, I would prefer to do it that way. But that's just me.
Does, is there consensus on the board for that type of analysis to be completed?
We can wait to ask Steve. If Steve says, if Steve McNally says it's not feasible, then that's fine.
Well, I'm asking for consensus of the board if they think that that's something that we want to ask staff to try to undertake.
Well, I think that we should get his opinion first then.
Well, maybe we just ask whether there is appetite by the staff to make that analysis.
Asked by sta, wait a minute. So I, you're asking if there's appetite by the staff to make that analysis? I believe I heard Mr. Zankowski say that if we, if there's consensus of the board, that they would do that, but I am getting that, I, I think that the analysis is going to come back saying that it's an operation that we are not set up to do.
There's a lot more that's involved, because not only the tree climber, you have to have people on the ground that are trained as well. So there's, is, is quite a bit of, of training that will have to go on in hiring of individuals to be able to determine how this would go. But again, we can do that, so at least then you'd have the opportunity to be able to weigh the two between in-house and contracted.
We, we did have this in-house at one point though, did we not?
We did have a very small crew that did that. Steve, I'll let you go from there.
So back a few years ago, it was always supplemented by outside folks. So what the Commissioner is asking for is a large capital and manpower to do this work. Like, as the manager said, crane, bucket truck, other trucks. It's not just one person, it's an entire crew. Have to be trained, go through insurance, safety programs, so it's not a small undertaking.
No, it's, it's not a small undertaking, but you're paying for that anyway. I mean, you know, if you're going to pay to have a spandear, to rent their trucks and their, their cranes, then it's fine. Same thing with the, with the essential, it's almost the same thing with the sewer. Do you want to keep the stuff in-house? There's a little bit more pride. No one likes those trees that, you know, are in the shape of a U where we're just hacked. And that's what you, you know, when there's no pride and no accountability and these people that don't live here and drive by and know these people, I think you'll get a better service. Look, it may be three times as much and then the answer's no. But if it's not too cost prohibitive and too, and too time prohibitive to get those numbers, I just think that it would be good to at least put that in, in the evaluation of what we do. I just, for me, I think that's how you make a, a good decision.
Is the, should we wait and see if, I mean, I don't know, Steve and Bob, I mean, is, is this something that the staff is worthwhile for the staff to undertake?
We could do, there's no problem with us doing it. That would be fine, because again, I think, once you have those comparisons, you can make an informed decision on this is, this is what we should do. Because you'll have to have more than one crew to be able to cover the township and what needs to be done. So it, it's, it's lar, it will be large, but there's no problem with us doing that. We can actually, we will put that all together.
And then couldn't they help with ongoing maintenance? So after, so you have two, three crews, but then going forward, then you don't get into the same situation that you're in again?
Right.
Ten years later.
You'll, you will have a lot of that, so maintenance, so yes. So we can do that.
Is there board consensus for this analysis?
Interested in seeing it.
I'm looking for consensus. So Commissioner Farhi, you, yes. Commissioner Booker?
I, I don't, I don't care. I, I think, I think-
It's going to come back more money than bidding it out, so.
It may, but certainly look at it.
Commissioner Abel?
I would, I would support holding off till we get the bids. If they seem high, then it's worth having that discussion. If they're manageable and we're not creating more positions, I think we'd go with the bids and there'd be no need for the comparison.
Commissioner Larkin?
I, I agree, I think, with the sense of the board that this is ultimately going to end up coming back as more expensive than hiring the work out. Anecdotally, I have heard that the quality of the tree maintenance in the township has declined in the time since we've no longer had someone working on behalf of the township full-time to do this. I guess I'm not really so much interested in can we bring all of this in-house as I am in, could we bring it in-house to just take down smaller limbs, do a little more than we're doing right now and still hire out the larger projects? And then maybe do a better job with maintenance? And I'm also just interested in the number. It doesn't sound like it's going to take a lot of time or effort to put it together, so I'd like to see it.
Commissioner Nagel?
When Gary Rowland had that crew, Steve, what do you have, about eight guys?
I know in my time here, we had one person that climbed, and, and one guy on the ground. We didn't have a bucket truck, and I'm not speaking for my colleague, Steve McNally, but, and when that person retired, we had nobody. But even when that person was here, we always put out an annual tree removal and pruning project. That was to supplement what that, that one gentleman did.
That crew actually only worked in parks.
That was a parks-based crew, correct?
Right. And, I mean, I was on the Parks Board when they did away with that crew and sumed it into just the parks crew. But like you said, we were still hiring Schreiner, those guys, when they were first getting started and-
We put out a big, a bid each year called Radnor Township Tree Removal and Pruning Project.
Yeah.
And stump grinding.
So I, I don't see a whole lot of value, and I'd rather see us look carefully at our staffing so that we can increase some maintenance of the trees, not just cut them That's what we really should be doing, is taking care of them.
One of my former careers was the Executive Director of the Pennsylvania Delaware Chapter of ISA. Becoming a certified arborist is not quick. Takes a couple of years, number of courses, quite a bit of testing. So when someone is an ISA-trained tree climber, you know your liability insurance goes down because they are very qualified. It takes young, strong guys who want to start in the business, like Steve Schreiner, John Ward and his sons, Bill, forgetting the last name, Johnston and his son. And I ran that organization from a executive director for about eight years. It's nothing to just bring it in-house. You'd have to have a permanent crew with permanent equipment. Some of these trees now, they're using large cranes and they're literally cutting the base and lifting the entire tree up in the air. It's not light work. You can see people who are not ISA-certified cutting down some of these trees, and it's pretty awful. And I would hazard a guess that very few PICO guys are ISA-trained, but that's the standard, and that's what you want. I agree with Jack. Let's spend the money on doing some maintenance training, which does not take as much time. Because if you get tree climbers, that's what they want to do. You can't be a trash collector one day and a tree climber the next. It just doesn't work.
Thank you, Sarah. Yeah, I would be more inclined to support an analysis of maintenance and what that would cost and what that would look like. You know, but to Commissioner Abel's point, you know, maybe we wait and see when the bids come back, and if they seem crazy, then, you know, we look to perhaps bring it in-house. But I would definitely be more interested in maintenance, and then maybe we won't get to this point where we have to have bids to, you know, where we could be looking at, you know, millions, thousands, millions. So I, I don't hear consensus for this kind of analysis right now, but maybe we can revisit this when we get the bids back. Okay? All right. All right, moving on. Any reports from Parks and Rec, Public Safety, Community Development, Personnel and Administration? I just have one announcement from the library. So December 1st is the Elves for the Shelves Run. There is up and active the registration site on their website, the Radnor Memorial Library website, and that benefits the Radnor Memorial Library. Anything from Public Health?
Nothing.
Okay. New business. Discussion regarding adding a Board of Commissioner, or represent, represent, Board of Commission Representation to the Shade Tree Committee. So this came forward to me as a request from the Shade Tree Committee. How apropos that we're talking about trees this evening. They would be, they would like to have a representative. Right now, we do not have a sitting member on their board. And they feel like there would be a lot of, you know, a lot better communication, a lot more synergy between the things that we are doing and what they are doing if there was a representative. And, you know, Commissioner Abel, and I know you've most recently sat on Shade Tree. Do you mind if I prevail upon you to give some thoughts on this? Do you think this is a good idea or?
Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea. We have representatives on other committees, so I think there's value added. I mean, there was discussions when I was on it about how to, you know, I don't think they've ever asked for funding before in the budget. And there were a lot of projects coming down the path that they wanted to get involved in, so to have a Commissioner there to kind of take them through the process would be helpful. You know, Steve sits, sits in the meetings and he's helpful, but I think it's also, I think it'd be of value to have somebody up here, be part of their meetings.
Is there any other Commissioners who have any thoughts on this? Staff, Bob, do you have any, see any upsides, downsides?
Oh, I think it'd be very good to have a Commissioner sitting on the, on the board, so they get a feeling and a sense of, of the Board of Commissioners, which way they need to go. So I think it'd be very good.
Do we need any sort of official resolution to do this, or do we just go ahead and say that we're going to do this?
You can make, you can make the appointment if there's an open seat at this point.
Okay. Okay. All right, I don't know if, should I seek volunteers now at this moment, or do you guys want to think about it? Or should I just go ahead and make an appointment? Any volunteers?
Is their meeting set?
When do they meet?
Steve, Steve, when does the Shade Tree meet?
We just had Shade Tree last week, so it's, I think, that Wednesday of the month. Let me pull that up, sir, I'm sorry.
The second Wednesday?
I'll, I'll do it if you need a volunteer. If nobody else wants to, but if somebody else wants to, they, they're welcome to it.
Okay. All right, well, we don't have to do it at this moment. Maybe everyone can, you know, consider it, think about it, and let me know, but we will go ahead and, you know, the Shade Tree Commission, if you're watching, we will definitely have somebody to sit on, on the board and attend your meetings. All right. Next, it's discussion regarding amending the stormwater ordinance. So this came up last, at our last meeting. Commissioner Abel, you had made a request around that. I think Mr., Mr. Rice, it was around taking some of the funds and using it to spend on equipment to assist our first responders during flooding. And I know we directed Mr. Rice at the time to take a look and see if this is something that was feasible. Mr. Rice, do you want to?
Sure. Right. At the last meeting, the Board directed me to look at whether or not the money that's been collected under the stormwater fee ordinance and the program could be utilized for some other purpose. And the short answer is it can. You have a memo from me, you have a legal opinion from me, I gave you some of the, the history of how that stormwater fee came into play. The initial step in that process was the retention of a consultant at the cost of $248,000 to do a study to justify the stormwater fee. That was the only reason for the study. So you have some of that information from me. This was specifically set up as an enterprise fund also, and the ordinance says that. That was a discussion that was held at the time, back in 2015, that it had to be an enterprise fund so that some future Board of Commissioners would not use it for some other purpose. I mean, go back and look at the meeting minutes, but that was a specific, because you had some past experience with sanitary sewer fund being used for some other purpose. And so-
Open space fund?
Yes. So that's, that's the problem that you're facing. I mean, it's a worthy cause, there's a need for those expenditures, but when you enacted the legislation, the restrictions that you put on that fund or in that ordinance, you can't just amend the ordinance and say, well, let's use it for boats or rescue vehicles or those types of things. You know, what you would get then is everyone that's paying that fee would have a claim. And it would be more like a general fund expenditure, you know, that gets paid out of money you receive for taxes. So fees are for a service, water, sewer, power, stormwater. The service you're providing is you're taking care of stormwater that comes off everyone's lots and managing it and fixing things. So unfortunately, you can't use it for emergency service types of equipment.
John, I appreciate that. And again, the goal all along was to find ways to make sure our first responders have the equipment, training necessary to, you know, protect the community. I think the goal was accomplished when, at the last meeting, there seemed to be a consensus that we're not going to try to nickel and dime our first responders and that we're going to get them what they need. So that accomplished that task. And Bill, something that, you know, I want to look toward is, in the budget, having some, maybe looking at having a dedicated fund, because this isn't a one-time occurrence. There's going to be expenses, I would think, on an annual basis.
I'll second that, and I'm going to reach out later, but also right now, over the airwaves, to the first responders and ask them, we shouldn't be in the position of guessing what it is that they need. So contact your Commissioner, contact Lisa, contact township staff, and let us know what it is that we can get you in particular in terms of dollars, equipment and training.
Yeah, I think that sounds good. I, I support that as well. I think it should be something that is in the budget and that we are able to consider on an ongoing basis. I had just one other thing, and I don't know, I'm sorry, did anyone else have any comments on that? Okay. With regards to the stormwater ordinance, one of the things that was brought up, I believe, in public comment, and this came to me a lot when I was out and about meeting with residents last summer. People are, there's a concern about people, you know, are wanting to be able to get a credit when they do something to remove impervious surface. In conversations with you, I think, Mr. Rice, you said that that was something that had been considered initially with the ordinance and then was tabled, or?
Yeah, I, I mean, Steve may recall this, but as I was going back to 2013 and some of the studies, the consultant had put together various pieces of a document that were released to the public, and they were having ongoing meetings. There's a piece on credits. There was a discussion in how to do that and what that would entail, and there was a discussion- and there was a discussion by the Board about doing that, and it was deferred. I mean, there was a specific decision for the Board not to, because it was a little more complicated than I think what the Board at the time thought. It was deferred, and the Board never went back to it. But I can, Steve, you probably have it from AMIC.
I do.
It's like a two-page analysis of credits.
We actually did it with Gannon Fleming, too. Gannon Fleming did a draft ordinance amendment based on some requests by the Board of Commissioners, but that, the same thing, did not move forward.
What I would suggest is look at the information. I mean, there's, you know, there's some obvious credits. If someone removes impervious surface and turns it into lawn, I guess you should get a credit for that. There's some other things that are listed in that document that you would simply have to, you know, add that to the ordinance, since it doesn't really exist now. And it would have to be administratively, Steve, it would have to be managed with, through some kind of, I think there was an application process for the credit. But we have some information, I'll circulate what I have, and then Steve will get you whatever he has, and it would be something maybe for the next meeting to discuss, if you want to go down that path for an amendment.
Is it appropriate, I guess, to discuss this now, like, if it has budgetary impact or anything like that?
If you're looking for a credit program to the stormwater fund, so from a commercial standpoint, any reduction in impervious surface is an immediate reduction in the fee you pay. It's not that way for residential properties because it's based on lot size. If you're talking from a stormwater management standpoint, we do not provide credit for removal of impervious in the calculations that you make for the stormwater management. So I guess there's two ways. So if you're looking at a credit program, or incorporating it into the stormwater management ordinance so that folks, in essence, get credit for removing. So I have a driveway that's 1,000 square feet, I'm removing half of it, and I'm putting up an addition, you know, will that reduce the stormwater management I have to install?
Yes, I'm looking to help residents, specifically.
So it could be both. So that would be a program where you have a credit program, where you're not doing any construction, you just want to receive a credit for removing impervious surface from your property? And in the stormwater management ordinance, you wouldn't be sizing your stormwater management facility based on impervious that's no longer on your lot.
I guess if there's, we can circulate, and then we can discuss as a board and see if people.
Yeah, it's a reduction of the water leaving your lot, too, however that happens, Steve. I think that that's, you know, you can put a seepage pit, if you have a big enough backyard, and capture it that way.
We have folks that, we've been talking about incentivizing the remove, reduction of impervious for a long time, we've just really haven't tackled it.
Well, maybe it's time to tackle.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. All right. Old business. Discussion on hanging and unintended utility wires throughout the township. Commissioner Abel, is this you?
Yeah, I asked Bob to put this on there, on the agenda. This is an issue I've talked about in the past, is driving down the streets, walking down the streets, and just seeing clipped wires hanging within reach. Last week, I had a son playing baseball at Klemmer Crohn, and I was walking down one of the side streets, and there's just a wire hanging over a driveway. Immediately sent it in to Bob, and I think that wire was taken down. But the point is that we still have utility companies coming through the township clipping and leaving, and so I've asked Bob if he would be able to put something together to where we could start the discussion with the utility companies and find a way to resolve this once and for all.
Madam President, if I may add to this. We've taken some photos here, and I know, Commissioner Abel, I know we've worked on this, looked at this, just some of these where you see the utilities just leave the cut poles here. You've got lines that are hanging down there, down to the sidewalk. Again, you've got those wires hanging everywhere up on top of the poles, which they have actually fallen to the ground, and we've tried to get the companies out to replace these, repair them, and it takes a long time to be able to do this. If you drive around the township, there's a branch that gets tangled up in there that we try to call the utilities out for, and I believe that even still may be there. Again, you see the wires hanging, the cluster of wires that just drop off the poles. You have a tree that's actually leaning on the wires, that many times it's hard to get the utility out to actually remove that. There you see one of the new projects that the utilities have come up with, that it's usually the last one off the pole, actually takes the pole out, but now they've decided that, well, we're going to argue, so we'll leave a piece of the pole up in the wires. So, which is problematic, as you can sure see, but it looks awful. Again, look at the lines that are hanging down, that are left to hang. So this is a continual, ongoing problem that we have in the township. I believe, over the past couple of years, it's gotten worse in the township. So one of the suggestions I would have, and I know the solicitor has informed me that to be able to charge each utility a per-foot charge, if it's 2 cents, 3 cents per foot for maintenance of these, because many times we've actually had some of our folks taking, cutting the cable lines down because they are either tied in sidewalks, or over driveways, or actually not sure if, we don't want to have where kids can actually take a swing on these, and we would not want them to actually take a swing on a power line that's hanging down. So this is a big problem, a big issue. I would like to see us move forward and introduce an ordinance of this. Again, you see the fine work done by the utilities there, with that piece sitting up there. So this is, again, something that I think if we introduced it, it'd be interesting to see what the utilities come up with. And again, there's another one of those cables that are tied up there that, who knows when they're going to come to it, and a lot of times, these actually will unfurl here and actually be ending up on the ground, which are very problematic, especially when you're trying to teach your kids not to touch a wire. You don't know what it is, but the opportunities for these to fail, the way they've got these coiled, is huge. So this is a problem that's getting worse.
It is getting worse, and it's also because of these Verizon and Comcast installers, you know, when they replace your changeover services, they get out of there as quick as they can. So most of these, I think, are just cable, you know, leftover cables. So, I mean, it's going to be very difficult to keep track of these guys as you go. So what are you going to do to solve it? How do you solve this?
I would suggest that somebody from the township reach out to the PUC, they have a consumer advocate. And there is a group of people in Montgomery County, I've been at a couple of meetings, who are making noise about this exact issue. I'll try to get contact info. There's a gentleman that has been at several municipalities about this exact issue on, like Ridge Pike coming out of Norristown, Germantown Pike coming out of Norristown, and, but the PUC is, you know, they need, they regulate a lot of these utilities, and, you know, they can penalize them. I don't know how effective they are. I know they have a consumer advocate, I would probably start there. The township puts something together and try to bring this, and with documentation like this, and see where it goes. Because I think there's a group, I know there's a group, I don't know whether it's two people or 20 people, but I've seen them at a couple other municipal meetings about this situation. So I'll get whatever info I can and get it to Jake and Bob, and then, you know, see what we can do about it.
Thanks, John.
Beyond the PUC, is there any kind of corresponding law that you know of that would handle this? I mean, this is, because they're all going to point the finger, and I get that's why there's a PUC, but PICO's going to say, you know, this is our poll, but, or Verizon, or whomever, and they'll just, there'll be a lot of finger pointing. Now, my question is, if we do come up with an ordinance or something where we're going to say, hey, we're going to go after you for this wire, this, that, and the other thing, if there are laws on the books, I mean, would our township ordinance supersede any kind of law, or, you know?
Well, I mean, it's a difficult question to answer on the spot, but, you know, the PUC has primary jurisdiction and regulation with the public utilities. They get a certificate of convenience, and then they're subject to penalties, and they're subject to the way they operate. These are in either state rights of way, these poles, or township rights of way. The township rights of way, we may have some ability to penalize the operators if it's a health, safety, and welfare issue. They may say it's not, they may just say it doesn't look nice. So who do we have that we can put on a witness stand and say that this is an unsafe condition? We need somebody that's willing, you know, that will say that.
And just one, there's a common theme tonight, where you have these trees and utility wires and all this. So I think, and obviously something that we can't do, but putting some of these wires underground, looking at that going forward, I think, would make a big difference when it comes to maintenance and.
Yeah, most new development, I think, is underground, but you're, you're not going to have a whole lot of new development. You're sort of, these are going to deteriorate, and the older communities, like I said, I, you know, coming out of Norristown, if you go up Ridge Pike, you go through East Norrington, West Norrington, Lower Providence, Upper, you know, it's a serious issue, and, you know, I would, and other municipalities are dealing with it. So I think you need to reach out to some neighbors, you know, and not just be in Radnor because they're dealing with it, I don't know what they're doing, but I've heard enough noise that it's coming to their attention. They may be, they may have some, something going on with the PUC already, Sean, I don't know, Jake, but, you know, I'll get what info I have, and, you know, I think that's where you go. Be difficult for the township to enact a law that would preempt what the PUC does. Just not, not going to be effective.
Sarah Pilling again. I don't mean to be popcorn. I suspect you were walking on Garrett Avenue. Here's what happens. We have five student houses in a row, just off the corner of Conestoga on Garrett Avenue. Kids move in in late August, they order Comcast or Verizon cable. Whoever it is comes and strings new wire. They leave in May, they come back, and they cut it off. So you have not, so you have new cables every year, and the old cable just hangs on the post. It looks like, it actually looks like Haiti looks like, because I spent 10 years going there. It looks just like that. It's awful. And you're right, it's sagging in the driveways, and it's your cable companies. And all they do, it's just easy, I'm out of here, I'm not going to pay the bill anymore because I've graduated, they come in and cut, they wind it up and stick it on the post. The new tenants move in in August, they order cable, they come and put new cable in. They don't splice nothing, and that's why. I've lived here 36 years, and I don't know when Verizon and Comcast cable came in because I don't use it. But that, they're the companies. It's not PICO. It's your cable companies, and it just looks awful.
Thank you, Sarah.
Madam President, if I may?
Yes.
I know I'm probably the only one that will suggest, I would ask if we can do something with John, to actually prepare a piece of legislation that would impose penalties and fines to this. And I know, just talking with John, it would be something, too, that if the Board would want to consider this, since we're talking trees, to PennDOT, because this township subsidizes PennDOT's budget. We spend a lot of money maintaining their right-of-ways, their properties that they should be responsible for. I would like to see something introduced, because then it starts to dialogue with the utilities, not with each other, because it's not going too far, I would think, if you put that first shot across the bow of these utilities to say, we're moving forward, and we need to see some action. It begins the conversation and dialogue directly with the utilities. And the Public Utilities Commission we could send down, and I think a lot of us would be willing to go and testify in front of the PUC for what needs to be done.
Can you escrow money for the, for PennDOT, or not? Can you withhold money?
I think he means that we have to do the maintenance work in the first instance, which in years to their benefit. We can't escrow those funds because we have to pay, otherwise it doesn't get done in the first place. But it's their obligation to pay, we're just doing it for them.
So Bob, Bob, what are you looking for? Are you looking for direction from the Board?
Yes, to ask John to put a draft together and put it on the agenda for you to look at, discuss, change, tweak, modify language, but at least begins the dialogue that we're serious about this.
I'd support that.
Anything to generate dialogue is, you know, that's fine. Does anyone else have any objections? Okay. I don't know that they'll listen to us, but I guess we can certainly dialogue and see where it goes.
No, I think Bob's right, the goal is to get them to the table to start talking.
All right. Okay. Public participation. Is anyone for final public participation? Okay. Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Any second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes six to nothing with Commissioner Clark out.